Not only locally, Lord God, but all this United States of America. We continue to pray and ask that you be with all our leaders, Lord, as we continue to try to lead and guide the people make decisions, Lord God. Father, we ask that you be with us. We pray for our law enforcement officers, our military, Lord. We thank you for those people, Lord God, who's putting harms away every day, Father. We ask that you be with them, Lord God. We pray for their families, Lord God. Be with them also, Lord. Lord, bless our citizens here in Guff County, Lord. Continue to be with the Panhandle, Lord. Continue to be with our local leaders, Lord. Bless this board, Lord God, and bless everyone in this room. Father, we do want to pray a special prayer for Commissioner Rogers. We ask that you be with him, Father. I ask that you strengthen his body, Lord. Father, we give you praise. We give you glory. We give you the honors in Christ name we pray. Amen.
Join me in prayers, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with every heart and soul.
Good morning to everyone. Welcome you to the February 26, 2019 Board of County Commission meeting. Just a quick reminder, if you have any business before the board, please make sure you fill out the form located behind Mr. Paul and Mr. Whitfield. Make sure you get that form filled out so we can recognize you towards the end. And just please, once again, just remember we do have an ordinance. So you will be allowed three minutes for individual, five minutes if you're representing a group or a business. At this time, we're going to move right down to the consent agenda. This is where one, this is where the one motion, one vote will pass. If there's anyone with any concerns about the consent agenda, this is where we're going to recognize you so we can deal with it. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? If not, is there any staff members with any questions or concerns? Staff members, questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Is none? Any board members with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? If none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move, except for the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Say.
Taken by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes for and off. All right, moving right on down to county staff business. Mr. Hammond, you go first.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
First thing, number eight on your agenda, bid number 18, 19, 21, financing of the public safety facility. My recommendation for the low bid of People's South Bank at a rate of 3.6% and no fee and will close on or before February 28, 19.
You said 3.6, Mark?
3.6.
And no closing?
No closing.
All right, I entertain a motion that we accept that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So a motion by Commissioner Macron, in the second.
Say.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this?
And if you could include in the motion, the chairman to sign all the necessary documents to close.
Yeah, okay. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes for and off.
Mr. Yager and I had a, can't remember the day now, I think it was last Thursday, last Wednesday or Thursday, had a positive blunt conversation with Treasury and some of their folks. And they're telling us now that we can close potentially on their deal for the entire thing in early April. So even though it's filed us up to some degree, it's not a complete disaster, so we'll move forward with that. On number seven of your agenda, bid 18, 19, dash 19, public assistance consolidate, it's my recommendation that we table these at this point.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we table.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, to table.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Say.
Taken by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? This table? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes for and off.
I don't see Alex here. Our current provider at the last minute did not bid. And I can't say enough positives about Alex's work and his staff. I can't say enough negatives about the hierarchy at Hoarder, the way that they've handled this the last couple of weeks. So I'll just leave it at that. But I would assume that we'll have a recommendation maybe the end of next week on whether to accept one of these other proposals. I think we had five, or if we need to go out and rebid. Next thing I have, Mr. Chairman, just an update on Guff Air Sewer. I met with the city. We planned to meet either Wednesday or Thursday with the owner and work out the details of them just taking the affluent. Looks like we can get to a resolution to that, to get that plan offline and everybody will be happy. So I'll report at the next meeting, at the next special meeting, on how that goes.
All right, I think so.
Got a couple of bridge updates on Mark to give, an update on C-30. We had some storm damage. Just to make the board aware of that.
Morning, Commissioners. It's something we were thinking about, you know, post-storm. It wasn't the visible damage like you saw on some of the other bridges, but we were waiting until DOT had an opportunity to come in and inspect our bridges. Well, we're starting to have some that are deficient in areas. And the C-30B bridge down from the raw bar toward the way to the boat ramp is the one that most concerned at the moment. They had recommended that we reduce the weight limit, and we did that. There's a couple of other things that we need to do. It's going to be re-inspected in June. But at some juncture, I've been getting with a bridge contractor and with the county engineer, and we'll come up with a plan of what we need to do to sustain the use of the bridge.
Mark, some damage on Money Bay. And.
Yeah, the bridge report from Money Bay came in this week as well, and it showed some issues with it. Again, we haven't had opportunity to go through them and find exactly what it's going to take to get it up to speed. But the weight limit on Money Bay actually didn't go down, just remained the same, but the C-30B actually dropped.
Same as Bay is open.
Same as Bay is back. That's great.
Okay.
But we'll keep you updated as we go along with the bridges.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
And they also, you might want to talk about the Country Club Road. It's a patching, but we may not be.
Yeah, if y'all have traveled the Country Club Road while the bridge that on the state road was under construction, you saw the demise that was happening with that with the extra traffic and the big trucks. There's been some shoulder work done and some patches redone, but it probably still needs to be addressed at some juncture about fixing it more permanently. It's just patches right now, but it's in better shape than it had gotten.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Well, if we can get a mosquito control update, Austin, Norman.
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you all are aware, we had a pile of rain and a pretty mild winter. That being said, the mosquitoes have been pretty outrageous lately. We've started spraying. We started last Monday, and that's as early as I can recall us ever starting in my 13 years here. The things that'll prevent us from being able to spray right now like we normally would would be the cooler temperatures, windy conditions, or if it started to rain. That would all prohibit us from spraying according to the label. As far as the debris and the ditches and all, it's creating some blockages and additional breeding habitat for the mosquitoes. So we are going to work to try to get the ditches open back up and flowing. We've also increased, due to the mosquito populations being as high as they are, we've also increased the spray flow rate on the trucks to where we're actually putting out more chemical than what we normally do when we're on more of a maintenance-type routine.
Okay, appreciate that, sir.
So everyone knows, I've got a lot of calls about the ditches on the rightways on the state roads. I think after the debris concludes, that they're going to go back and work on the ditch at right mark.
That's right. From what I understand, with DRC on the state road, like C-30E, is once the debris is picked up, it's still in DRC's contract to go back and get the ditches back to workable condition. And that's, from what I understand, the covert pipes and the ditches.
Good. What they've done so far is excellent. The small sections that they've done, they've really done a good job cleaning, so.
All right, you see that, I'm sure I understand.
While we're on that, the write and entry forms are available now. They're online. They're on the emergency management site, they're on the county side. Their paper copies are available by duty at the front desk, and they are starting to flow in now, so we're doing good. Also want to give kudos, I thought I saw somebody from Metric earlier. They made a step. There you go. The, we're really working good now with Metric and both of the haulers that are getting, I mean, every time we go to Panama, I'm amazed at how good we look versus how far behind they are. It seems to be anyway, they have a lot more stuff. They're cleaning back in the parks. They're doing the great job on remaining trees. So everything's going much, much, much smoother with that, so I appreciate their help with that. Lawrence is going to bring up triad funding later. Can we get a, I know I had Commissioner Rogers call me, Commissioner McDaniel call me about Highland View Code Enforcement issue. We sent those folks out to Corpus yesterday. Don't say, did you, did you go?
Yes, sir.
You want to give an update, or?
Okay. Me and Code Enforcement went out to Corpus yesterday on the code complaint that happened over the weekend, and we got it in, and we found that the plant is, has several issues to contend with. And so we addressed him yesterday, and he assured us that he would start cleaning up and doing what he needs to be doing.
And the reason I brought this up, I know the Sheriff's Office had to be involved in that particular one, but also Oak Grove, we need to continue. I had another call from Mr. Wall. Apparently they had a fire there behind one of those, one of those RVs burned behind that house, which may have been heated connected, but we need to look at that street as well going forward. We're trying to ramp up the Code Enforcement building. We're just so busy right now. And you've got a new helper. How's that working out?
Very good. We got a, got a good lady from the Career Source. She's working very well for us.
I can't say enough positive about this program with Career Source versus the program we had 20 years ago with the flood. So we'd probably need to get them to come at the next meeting and give an update. Mark has quite a number of folks working at the landfill and different what. We're going to use some for mosquito spraying. TDC has a big crew. We have someone in the building department. Where else do we?
I think it's.
That's it. But we have quite a number of folks, over 20 folks working, so it's not costing us a dime. It's being paid for by Career Source, and I think they pay them $15 an hour. It's a good job. Give people the opportunity to get to work. Just for informational purposes, the official delegation meeting, since the last one, that worked out quite so well, will be tomorrow at 4:30 here in the boardroom with Senator Monford. Update on the sand, the dredge is actually in place, and I don't know if it's operational yet, but they are, they are setting up the dredge in the Honeyville pit as we speak. Last thing I have, and it's going to take just a couple of minutes, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to give the board and the public an update on the DRA situation. There's been some misinformation and not, you know, not ill-intended, but just I think we need a Reader's Digest version of how we got to where we got and how we go forward. I know the city commission is going to have a workshop, I believe, Monday, and then potentially to vote on the proposal and local again on, at their next board meeting, which I guess will be next Tuesday. The county, ever since probably 1998, has been adamantly opposed to the DRA. And again, a lot of it's probably communications on both sides. There was, there was some surprise with some ones in the public at the last city meeting about this coming up. Nobody knew that it was coming up. In reality, the county was surprised when the city more than a year ago went out and said they were going to extend for 30 years and lived in those discussions with the county. So it takes two to tango in this situation. And we've been negotiating, I have been negotiating with Commissioner Ashbrook for more than two months on this deal. This deal, this agreement that came up is such a surprise that the terms of that agreement haven't changed from when the city DRA board voted for us to put those terms in writing, you know, more than six weeks ago. So I think there's just a lot of confusions. If you give me about five or six minutes, I'll give a timeline of how we got to the DRA. The Downtown Redevelopment Agency kind of started to come to fruition in 1989. It was a group, basically the Downtown Merchants Association, good folks, some of them gone now, but that, I believe Wayne Taylor was the first chairman. They first approached the city commission about doing a community redevelopment agency, which became the Downtown Redevelopment Agency in 1989. In November 6 of 1990, the city commission adopted by emergency ordinance, the DRA. Now, county has a problem with that because the statute requires certain things happen, including the county being notified since it's going to have an effect on that budget. The clerk has no documentation where we were properly notified by certified mail that requires that designation. They redid the DRA by emergency ordinance in 1992 on May 5, and they changed some language because they had left out some of the required language that says blight and some of these other things. They changed it again by emergency ordinance on March 21, 1995. And the main change at that time was the boundary. And that boundary is pretty much the same today. And just to give folks an idea, it is the north side of Fifth Street, which is Cecil Colston Boulevard, and it runs to the water at the boat ramp, but not including the boat ramp. And it runs basically to Marina Drive, and it runs on the south side of Marina Drive to the McDonald's. It includes the McDonald's, does not include the Piggly Wiggly, shoots across the street and catches everything what is south of basically the railroad tracks, which would include the CBS and the old telephone storage warehouse, all the way to the front side of the courthouse up here at the railroad tracks. So basically that pie-shaped area of what is called downtown. The property values, the way it's set up, are set on the value of that property at the time of the adoption of the ordinance. So at the time of the adoption of the ordinance, the 1990 tax roll, the Downtown Redevelopment Agency had a taxable value of $12,857,000, I'll round it down without the cents. The first request to the county commission for money, the first request, you know, it was stated in the meeting that county hadn't paid for 15 years. The first request was May 3 of 2004, 14 years into the, into the adoption of the DRA. But let me tell you why. The city check, we have the letters from then property praiser Colbert, starting in 1992, every year on what the value of the DRA property was. In fact, it actually decreased in several of the years, and it had gone down, it was in the negative as late as 1994. In 1998, eight years after the DRA was established, the value in that area was just $13,615,000, which is only, in an eight-year period, it only increased $758,000. That year, had the DRA been legally set up and had legally had a, I can't think of the, TIF, TF, TF 214 DR, the county's contribution that year would have been $4,983. The city's contribution would have been $5,235, because at that time, the city's rent rate was a little bit higher than the county's. The first year that there was any real money in the DRA was 2001. Okay, that year, the value of the property was $16,715,000. The city's portion would have been $25,000, the county's would have been $25,353, almost the same, they're just, just the first variable year. It all happened when the Marina got developed. That was the conduit. Went back, the county was doing the building permits for the city at that time, and in that eight-year period, from the early 90s to 99, from 92 to 99, we only sold two new construction building permits in that entire area in that eight-year period. The Discount Auto Parts and the Tenon Federal Credit Union was the only new construction in that entire area. So the time, you know, 98th, the year the mill went down. So the facts are that the city at the time did not follow the letter of the law and the notice per Florida statute. The county would have most likely opposed that had they done that. The city ordinance did not reflect or define the requirements of blight and the orders of necessity in the original ordinance. The city ordinance originally did not identify the boundaries of the DRA as required by Florida law. By Florida law, the county is to pay per a DR 420 TIF, which was not received for the first time until 2008, and we have every one of those since then. Even though the county funded the DRA from 2004 on, the county did not receive a required annual report until 2006. Port St. Joe DRA was not registered with the state of Florida, and at that time, DCA, and that would be DEO until 2006, 16 years after it was founded in violation. The DRA did not have a separate fund at the time, has since changed that, and co-mingle funds with the city of Port St. Joe. My first, I guess, dealings with the DRA was when I came back and the county was in the process of laying off 40 people after the meltdown. I mean, we had basically a 45% cut in Avroon taxes in 2008. Public works got decimated. There were a lot of hard decisions they had to make when you go from a $15 million tax roll to a $9 million overnight, it went down to $7 million. The county asked the city to suspend for two years the collections on the DRA, and that would be for them and for us. At the time, ours, our payment that year was $258,000, and the city refused. So we contributed $258,000 that year to the DRA. Some things good, some things not so good, and we were laying off 40 folks at the county. So that's when the real, real heartburn came about. The, the timing is important because if they do it correctly, they have to start the process, they should have already started the process, and they voted to start the process, but I've seen the evidence that they've actually done. So the time to make an agreement, if we're going to make one, is now without getting into a lawsuit where nobody win. Bay County several years ago stood up to the cities in Bay County, several of them, like City of Panama, City Beach, do not have an Avroon tax. So they could put the entire city in a CRA or DRA. The problem is, over 20% of the taxes levied by Bay County go to fund DRAs, and that is aced, and that means everybody in Bay County that's paying the tax bill pays 120% more than what they should to pay for things like Pier Park. Pier Park's CRA last year was over $7 million to the Bay County taxpayer. So people in Lynn Haven are getting to pay for law enforcement and fire and EMS and all kinds of services that are provided at Pier Park because they're not paying anything to pay for the general government services. When I met with city folks, and we've come to what I think is a very fair agreement on both sides, I explained to them, the sheriff's office budget, the jail budget, I can't remember what EMS is much more, have more than quadrupled since 1990. I mean, it was meniscule, but guess what? We've got tourism, we've got more folks, we've got to provide services for our people, EMS, fire, roads. And the sad thing is that the McDonald's, which after Piggly Wiggly probably generates the most traffic in the county, has never paid anything for law enforcement. They're paying taxes. They pay about 12 grand a year in Avroon taxes on the McDonald's, but not a penny goes to the city to pay for the police department, not a penny goes to the sheriff or the jail or the EMS or any other government services. So when I broke it down for folks, it's kind of striking. If you own a house, and I just say in St. Joe Beach, and your tax bill's two grand a year, $40,000, excuse me, $40 of that two grand, a little over 2%, goes to fund the DRA if you're in the county. But if you're in the city, if you're in Garrison Plantation, and you have a house that's valued at $200,000, your county taxes this past year would have been $1,420. Of that, $28.40 would have gone for the DRA makeup. In the city, your taxes would be $719, $61.12 would be for the DRA. So the taxes are the price of civilized society. And I forgot who said that, I think it's all of Winter Homes, but we have to have a sheriff, we have to have a jail, we have to have EMS, we have to have a building department, we have to have a clerk, we have to have a property praiser. Everybody needs to pay for those services. But for the last 29 years, this downtown has been froze. And the real money drivers, the Centennial Bank, I looked it up, I think they paid $28,000 last year in Avroon taxes, not a penny paid for the sheriff's office. Now, my guess is Centennial Bank needs us to have a sheriff's office and a police department and a fire department and a, so people in Weewall got to pay extra for that, people at Kate got to pay extra for that. Everybody pays more to move this money into this fund. Now, I'm not arguing the fact, even though I don't like some of the things they've done, I don't like going from a four-lane road to a two-lane road. You can't turn left most times in the city of Port St. Joe now, you have to go down to the red light. But they have done some spitting up and some parking lot purchases that help traffic and whatnot. But for the most part, I don't know that the county taxpayer, certainly not the city taxpayer, who's got their boot banging to the bunk on this particular deal. Somebody has to pay the bill for county services, whether you like it or not. You may never call the sheriff, but you need him there. If he wasn't there, we'd have major problems. You may never call EMS, but you need him there. You or your loved one may need him one day. So that's what we've worked toward for the last six months, is a compromise of how we go forward without being in a contentious position. And it's really, it's more striking for the city resident than it is for the county resident. At the height, we were paying a little over 3% of our tax base was going to fund the DRA, over a quarter of a million dollars a year. Just a couple of years ago, the DRA was taking 14% of city levy taxes. 14%. It's eight and a half today, but as Marina Cove and that area develops, it will be more and more. And somebody has to pay for those services. We can't be stuck in a time warp where we're setting all of our prices and funding values at 30 years past. So going forward, we have a, we have a plan that y'all approved at the last meeting. I approved some minor tweaks of that plan. I hope the city will have a good workshop, let the public have input, and then I pray that the city will agree to that deal, which, you know, basically phases that out over the period of the next seven years, and we can move forward together. Any questions on that?
Thanks, any questions? Mr. Hammond?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Of this DRA, I think I would be fair to say that probably 95% of the residents of Guff County is not even aware of what's going on with this DRA. Now, what you're telling me is the people in Howard Street, the people in Oak Grove, the people in Old Street, people in Weewill Hiskar, all, a portion of their taxes is going to support this. It's been going on, you said, 1990, so it's a 30-year, so in 2020, let me see right here, it was sunset. Am I so far correct?
That is correct.
Now, and they're asking for another 30 years?
That is the official vote at the time, right now, is a 30 years. So what we're trying to do is to agree by interlocal agreement that they will not seek to extend or do any more DRAs for a period of 20 years, and we will make a side agreement and an interlocal agreement that you have proposed.
So what you're saying, if I understood you correctly, only two? We've got advanced auto parts and?
That was at that time. We've since had some more development, but the main, the money has primarily been spent on 98 and Reed Avenue, never been on Williams. But that's not where the growth is, and that's not where the money's coming from. The money's coming from Centennial Bank and Riss Gibson and the Marina. I mean, Marina's like 4 million, it was more than a third of the original, the original assessment. So what I'm saying is, if you want to stimulate redevelopment, redevelopment, you've got typically blight, you've got shotgun houses, crack houses, burned-down dilapidated houses. That type stuff has not happened. There's been no redevelopment there because it's a business area, in fact. I mean, Sears burned 25 years ago, it's still the same burned-out shell that it was in 1993.
But let me ask you one, Mr. Chairman. I was coming after this kid, you know, Robin Hood, he was a, what did he do? He sold from rich and gave it to the poor people. And I think this is just reversed. We're taking people and people that live in the city of Port St. Joe, and I guess within the city of Weewill Hiskar, they're getting hit twice. Am I on track there?
That's correct. I think that would be great. Now, not everybody that tend the DRA is rich, and not.
I know that.
But it is, it is, it is a philosophical difference, I think. I do not believe people on Garrison Avenue should pay for. I do not believe people on Garrison Avenue should pay for, for storefront facades on Reed Avenue. And, and, and the difference with this DRA is it makes it legal to spend county and city tax money on private property. Some of it, good, I mean, signs, but, but when does it end? They don't ever end. I mean, you never end. You, 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 you build a new facade, well, twenty years into it, we, we need to know. New sign, ten years later, we need to know. And that's the, that's what, we wanna wind this down and, and look at all of our businesses. Look at, you know, today, for example, and this is one of the things that I've mentioned to the city commissioner, growing up, my favorite icon, I guess, of the city of Port St. Joe was that gazebo in the bay. I loved to go down there, walk on it and eat and do all that kinda stuff as a kid. Today, it would not be legal to spend DRA money restricted to the north side of Fifth Street on that gazebo. If we had the agreement that we're proposing, they could pay max money for that to fix it. They could go and fix the Frank Fait Park, which today's not in the DRA.
It's not in.
So, we're looking at working together, I mean, we could, we could spend TDC money on George Court Park. They didn't have to spend DRA money on George Court Park. We could spend TDC money on Jettie Park, that Clifford Sam's Jettie Park. There, there are a lot of things that the city and county are working together, and that's the other thing, some of the, some of the old arguments, they don't trust the county, they don't trust, no. I asked one of the commissioners, I said, what county commissioner do you not trust? What county commissioner do you have a problem with? You're fighting arguments from ten years ago when there was this, I said, I don't know of any county commissioner that's got a problem with any city commissioner today. I don't know of any county staffer that's got a problem with any city staffer today. Every time during the hurricane, y'all need to borrow a pump, sure. You need to borrow a truck, sure. You need some gas, diesel, we, we were sharing, we were sharing diesel as, 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 as it happened. So, I really think we can get an agreement. I think it's in everybody's best interest not to get in a lawsuit, but, but I would, I would say that if we can't, the county for its taxpayers cannot afford to, to give up thirty more years of growth in an area that is, that is taxing our services. I mean, that, those areas need services that the county have to provide, and they're not paying for them. And it's not the business owner's fault. I mean, it's, Centennial Bank's paying, I won't say, they paid thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in taxes last year. County or city for, for government services didn't get a penny of that. And that's, that's what, that's what my problem is.
Mr. Hammond, I guess I lost my train of thought on that thing. All right. I don't see if we, if they going after another thirty, I guess, I can't go that route because a lot of us won't be around here another thirty, and there'll be children that's not even born yet will be paying on that thing. Thirty years and they don't have a vision of thirty? We gotta look at this thing hard and strong, we surely have. But anyway, I wanna commend you for your report there, for the good report. Uh, you're back, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir. Any, uh?
Good, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Michael, so that everyone knows, the Martin Luther King, uh, DRA is completely separate from, from Reed Avenue, so, so that everyone knows, this is not included in what we're talking about here.
It is not, and, and that's a, doing research, and, and I wanna thank Cherry for, for helping me with that. It started out, it wasn't, and, and it, it got away. And I actually think that, that had the original DRA included some of the blighted areas, especially the, 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 what I call shotgun houses, the old mill houses that were built in the thirties and the forties, that it would have been more successful. There, there was a, the original boundaries of this included areas of North Port St. Joe, it included areas as far south as Ninth Street. But there was a, there was public outcry in the city about doing housing projects, I guess, on Ninth Street or whatnot, and they, they narrowed the scope back to that nineteen ninety-five deal, which is the current boundary of the DRA. So, I, I think there is a place, I, I think the North Port St. Joe DRA has the, or CRA, excuse me, has the, the opportunity, if they do it right, to, to come up with new homes, get rid of the blight, that is truly blighted. I would have made the argument in nineteen ninety that, that Reed Avenue was not blighted. But again, we didn't have that opportunity to, you have the opportunity to now, and that's why I hope we can get an agreement. I started, you know, I, I think Commissioner Ashbrook got blasted pretty good because he didn't cut a good deal. I started at three, he started at ten, we wound up at seven. I, I think we've got a pretty good deal for everybody. And, and the negative is, if we can't get a deal, then, then I more recommend that, you know, we go to court to block them because that's, it is, it is, it's too much money and it's too much of a burden on the folks that aren't in that zone that are getting penalized and having to pay for their services, just like I said. Some of us will be dead and gone by the time that, that thirty-year term will be out. So, doesn't mean we're not gonna cooperate. It, I, I, Cherry found a letter back when I was on the county commission in ninety-five, wanted to make a motion, we, the county paid the match for, before the DRA even existed, the county paid the match to, to do the paving job, they got a grant, downtown, uh, Versus Association or whatever that was sitting as the DRA at the time. County paid twenty-five thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-five to match the grant, pave that road and do the manhole covers and whatnot. Twenty-five thousand's a lot of money in dang nineteen ninety-five. And when you talk about the county, they didn't collect for those years when they were three and four and five thousand dollars a year, that makes up for a lot of years paying twenty-five thousand. So, there's no reason we can't work together when we have a good project going forward. So, I, I, I hope that they will pass that deal and, and, and we can move forward.
All right. Any, any more questions? All right, yeah, hopefully, uh, the last thing, we need is a lawsuit, question, question to the city. So, hopefully, uh, we can continue to work well with, with the city guys and let's work, hopefully we can work something out. We appreciate all the hard work and all the time that y'all guys have put into it. Sam, you still got the floor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I would, I would tentatively say that, that if the city approves, uh, the interlocal, at their meeting on Tuesday, that we may need to have a special meeting maybe Thursday of next week. Uh, I should have a better handle on whether we're gonna move forward with the current proposals on the public assistance or if we need to go out and rebid for that. So, we, we may need to have a, a special meeting at the end of next week. But other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so no back?
I have nothing at this time, Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. See you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I attended the Triumph Board Meeting yesterday over in Bay County. Uh, I think all of you are aware, we, y'all had authorized to do a pre-application for a loss of adblock tax revenue. We did that in conjunction with the school board and the city of Port St. Joe. The discussion at a Triumph Meeting a few weeks ago was they wanted to establish a fund, and they directed their staff to establish a fund. They brought that fund back up to a vote of the Triumph Board yesterday, and they established what they, what they're gonna call Hurricane Michael, uh, Major Disaster, Disaster Recovery Program. So, they're gonna put fifteen million dollars in that program. It's for loss of adblock taxes, which is an allowable use of Triumph Funds. Uh, there's gonna be a, a application for the four counties affected. Uh, what Triumph Staff and, and the Triumph Board has asked to do is for all those to flow through the county commission. So, when we get that application, when they get that online with Triumph, you as a board will, will write that application, but we'll include the school board, uh, the city of Port St. Joe, and possibly the city of Weewaheska. I'm, uh, talking with them about any, any, any tax loss. I have talked with Mitch Burke, our property appraiser. Uh, he seems to think that, uh, it's on the lower end of what he projected earlier, uh, as they continue to do their analysis. So, it'll be a loss, uh, we think of somewhere around twenty percent for the school board and for the, uh, for, for the county commission. Uh, it'll be a loss of about ten percent for the city of Port St. Joe, and it could be a loss of up to five percent even for the city of Weewaheska. So, uh, once we get all those numbers together, uh, we'll put that application together. If we do have a meeting next Thursday, I would hope that I'd have all the information packaged together and that application filled out, so you, you possibly could approve that application to be submitted to the Triumph Board next Thursday and going forward. So, just wanted to let you know that they're going to try to get this money out sometime in April or early May, so the taxing authorities can have some money to recover from this hurricane going forward. That being said, there's been discussion that fifteen million is, is not gonna be enough. As y'all very well know, the cities of Bay County, uh, there's many of those cities that were hit very hard also. The school board in, in Bay County was hit hard, county was hit somewhat hard. So, I think they'll look going forward, this'll be a first tranche. They have, they have talked about providing fifty percent of what you submit. So, if you're gonna have a tax loss of twenty percent, uh, they may to begin with just fund, you know, fifty percent of that twenty percent. So, uh, I think it'll be a process going forward. I think they are trying to put a, a little bit of pressure on the legislature to help some too. So, we'll see how that process goes. But the good news is, and I talked to Jim Norton this morning, the good news is, is their plans are to get those money in the coffers of cities, counties, and school boards by May. So, going forward, we'll, we'll continue to keep you informed, and I've talked to each one of you individually, and, and I'll let you know how that progresses, but we'll, we'll be working on that application going forward.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from us? Ms. Summers?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Lee?
No, it's time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Austin?
I'm good.
Good, thank you. Ms. Herr? All right, Ms. Cap? All right, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Joe Paul?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I couldn't stand to not get up when everybody else sat down. I got two, three quick things. Number one, uh, I wanna personally thank mosquito control because they are out there doing their job. I have so many mosquitoes in my yard, between mosquitoes and bull gnats, and if y'all don't know it, bull gnats got about six rows of teeth. But mosquito control's done a tremendous job out in Stone Mill Creek area, uh, tech and care of the mosquitoes as best they can. They need to be commended for that. Everybody complains about mosquito control, and I'm one of the top complainers if I get too many mosquitoes, but they are definitely doing a good job. Secondly, for the public's knowledge, I want everyone to know that, uh, there has been a study performed concerning blue water Navy veterans and the age of orange exposure. Uh, it was a positive report, which will affect about seventy thousand veterans. In the meantime, the VA has filed a lawsuit, uh, for injunction against implementation of this until such time as they can study it proper. So, if you get the rumors about blue water Navy veterans, yes, there was a study done, yes, it was positive, but the VA has filed lawsuit to hold off on it until they can study it proper. Okay? From the ship's side of the house, I'd like to request that the board authorize me to go out for an early RFQ, disqualified ship contractors. The contractors we currently have are Gulf to Bay Construction, Wild Bill Builders, Raymond Drysback, and R and D Construction, which they're out of chip. Right now, when we go out for bids, we're lucky if we get a bid back from Raymond Drysback. And I can't bury him because we can't get enough work done. We normally do our qualification for contractors in the July, August timeframe. I'd like to go out early to do it to see if we can find some other contractors that are qualified. Uh, Mr. Brad Baer and I are working on a list of items they need to be qualified. It's stricter than we've done in the past because we really wanna make sure we get people to do it. But we've got, we've spent a half a million dollars of the seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. We've got eight new homes on the way here, should be here in about three and a half or four weeks, and the rest of that money is obligated, but that's money for rehabs that I've gotta have contractors to be able to do. So, if you would give me permission to do that, sir, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I entertain a motion.
Certainly.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich. I'll take the second. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Uh, any further board discussion on this RFQ in the contracts early? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes forward.
Mr. Chairman, lastly, I'd like to publicly thank Ms. Lynn Lanier for the job she is doing now as a qualified VSO and assisting me with the ship administration. I never knew how bad OCD was until I got her in the office. But what's happened is, our books are even straighter than they were before, and everything is, I mean, you could walk in the door today, we can show you everything you need to know.
That's good.
And I appreciate that. Uh, we're seeing an awful lot of people from October to December, we saw twice as many veterans as we saw last year at this time. So, they're, they're coming out in full force, and we're servicing them best we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Roberts? Ms. Rob?
That's something.
Yeah. All right. Is that missing my chair?
I'm good.
Your chair?
It is.
All right, that ends it, we go to board business. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, sir, come on.
Just to give you guys a quick report, yesterday our communications committee met, and we discussed what we need to do to try and get our radio system back where it needs to be and our pagers working for the fire departments. This time we're needing to purchase a repeater, the one that was on this tower, uh, was hit during the storm and is no longer operational, and we need to purchase one and have it mounted at the Duke Tower to get our south end pagers back in line. And that's gonna come at a cost of just under fifteen thousand dollars, and we'd have to have y'all's approval for that purchase. We also, for the north end, um, we're working with the school board about moving our equipment to their tower. We've got to do some testing of the tower and do some studies to make sure that we're gonna be able to do that. And as soon as we find out whether or not we can, and when we move our equipment there, we'll be able to raise it, and that will make a big difference for the north end with their paging system.
Okay.
Right now, it's going out over cell phones, and I think it's working fairly well, but there's still a lot of them that, that use the pagers and need those.
Okay. All right. So, I, I entertain a motion.
Certainly.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this, purchasing a repeater? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes forward. All right, thanks, sir. All right. Property appraiser, Mr. Burke?
No.
All right, board business. Just one of you general, wanna go first? Mr. McDaniel, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Uh, I wanna say we're, we're making progress after this hurricane, we are. I'm out every day looking, just like these other commissioners, and we're making, we're gonna get there. We really and truly are. One concern I have, Mr. Chairman, and I think our public works is working on this just for information to the people. I don't know how many street signs, information signs, stop signs, speed signs, school district, how many posts are twisted, bent, but we're gonna run up some money there. And we need to see if we can maybe, I don't, get some female money or something to help us offset that. But I, out in St. Joe Beach, if you don't know where you're going, and it's not that big, you don't know, is it on this side of this street or the other side of the street? And we've gotta get our street signs back up and make sure, lay it, uh, correlate with our nine-one-one service, make sure they're named correctly, and whether it's a street or an avenue or a road or whatever. But, uh, Mr. Clathern, I know you've already owned it, but that's something. And I mean, we talking about from county line to county line, all of it, entire county with its signage got hit hard, we really did. But, uh, I just wanna bring that to the, to the attention of everyone. Mr. Chairman, uh, that's all I have. Now, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rich.
Sure.
All right. Mr. McCrone?
A couple things, Mr. Chairman. Um, just wanna encourage everyone to get their stuff out by the road, uh, March fifteenth is, is the deadline on everything to roadside. And, uh, one, give me a report on, on, uh, any of that's count, we're out, know we're out looking for money, I just want everybody to know what's going on. Sure. If, that...
Sure, as y'all know, you approved us to start looking for funds. We're looking at several different pots and trying to get to the quickest source. Had intermediate conversations with Senator Monford. I think the quickest way would be to get an appropriation for that. At some point, I may have to do an appraisal. It may cost a thousand or two dollars to get that appraisal, but that would certainly give us an exact number. Because right now, I can't give Senator Monford an exact number of what that is. I'm giving him ballparks, but we are progressing on looking at different pots of money from that.
Thank you. Michael, Stompoe area, how are we looking on?
They've come along pretty good. They're doing basically the same thing they did here in town with the rock. And we were out there Thursday.
Last week.
Yeah, Thursday. And they were making progress. Now their time is up, April.
Towards the end of April.
Towards the end of April. Now, they may get an extension on some areas, but I think they're going to be close if not on target there. I will tell you that we've had a bunch of complaints on, as we did in St. Joe, on Highland Viewian. And we were out there yesterday, Mr. Clathrin and I went out to the Big Neil Park. But they do need to do better on that maintenance of traffic. It is especially at certain times, you will top the bridge and be on somebody that's on the bottom side of that bridge before you know it. And then we're going to have a wreck there when it, and it's a third of the distance as it was in town, and it's what, tenth of what it is at the Cape. It's taken too long to get that traffic moving there for that short little area. So I know Sheriff's Office had complaints. Commissioner Rogers has had a bunch of complaints because they will back up at certain times in the morning and the afternoon to the top of the taper bridge, so.
That's all that happens, Chairman.
Yeah, that red light.
That's right.
I come through the other night, and it just changed red. And I said, ten minutes, no cars coming at all. I was like, oh my. And luckily, I was in a Gulf County school bus, or not, I might have been pulled over by the Sheriff's Office. Ten minutes. All right, and the chair doesn't have anything. At this time, before we bring up Mr. Hammond, before we bring you up, we're going to move number ten up so we can go ahead and open this bid, bid number one eight one nine that's two zero. We're going to open that, and then we'll bring you up, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
This is opening a bid eighteen nineteen twenty. This is for the construction of a forty-eight by eighty metal building. We received two bidders. First bidder is Fisher Construction.
Mr. Chairman and Board, this morning we have a little bit separate bid tab sheet than what we normally do. So bear with me for just a moment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Base bid for Fisher Construction, offloading a building, two thousand five hundred dollars. Construct a building pad with all materials except the concrete, forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Roof and slab for plumbing, eight thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Roof and slab electrical, seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Erecting the building per engineer, fifty-one thousand, ninety-five dollars. Constructing two hour fire rated wall partition, nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Concrete and building, seventy thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. That is a direct purchase. Fourteen by fourteen roll-up doors, walk-through doors and windows, direct purchases, ten thousand, eight hundred dollars for a total base bid of two thousand, two thousand and one dollars, two thousand, one, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Two hundred.
Two oh one, six, six, six.
Two oh one, six.
Two hundred and six.
Yeah, two hundred and one.
Six, six hundred, six, six dollars, okay.
They also have an alternate bid to install two hundred amp meter base with disconnect, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Construct a twenty by twenty concrete handicap parking pad with signage, one thousand, nine hundred, ninety-five dollars. Installing a potable well pump with minimum thirty gallons per minute and two inch discharge and a two hundred gallon tank with all controls for two hundred and thirty volts, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's all.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lanier.
Yes, sir.
The, what is, would be the, have you run the numbers there, the total for the alternate and the primary construction?
I have not, but we can do that real quick.
Okay, well, that's fine.
No, we got one.
No, we got one. Oh, that's good. Yes, sir. That's fine.
Proceed with the next bid.
Yes, yes, please.
The second and final bid is James Tomlin Construction LLC. Mr. Chairman, while she's opening that up, the alternate bid to include all three items would be two oh seven, seven forty-five.
Two oh seven, seven. Thank you.
James Tomlin Construction, their prices are offloading the building, five thousand dollars. Constructing the building pad with all materials except concrete, sixty-five thousand. Roof and slab plumbing, thirteen thousand. Roof and slab electrical, seven thousand. Erecting building per engineer, forty-five thousand. That price includes insulation. Constructing the two hour fire rated wall partition, twenty-five thousand. Concrete and building, direct purchase, seventy-one thousand dollars. Fourteen by fourteen roll-up doors, walk-through door and windows, direct purchase of twenty-one thousand, three hundred for a total base bid of two hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. The alternate bids to install the two hundred amp meter base with disconnect, three thousand dollars. Construct twenty by twenty concrete handicap parking pad with signage, six thousand, five hundred dollars. And no bid on installing the potable well pump. Total price of that bid with alternates, two hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right.
We couldn't let the building department review that, and if we have time, come back at the end of the meeting.
Any motion for that?
No.
All right, building department going along with you. All right, move on down to item number six, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Before I get into this update on the special election, I made a few crib sheets just for everyone to follow along with. Just make sure I don't miss any vital points, just dates, timeframes, costs, things like that. I would like to give everyone that. Okay, we'll get right into it. As you are all aware, Representative Beshear's resignation has created a vacancy in the State House District Seven. Gulf County and nine other counties make up that district, so the state has called for a special election to fill that vacancy. I hope to give y'all an update a little bit earlier than this, but to be frank, until the state actually called for the special election, and we went through the candidate qualifying period, we really didn't have a firm picture of what we were looking at. Now we do. The candidate qualifying ended on February the fourteenth. Four Republican candidates qualified and one Democratic candidate qualified. So what that means, what we're looking at, although the state is saying a special election, we are actually looking at two separate standalone elections. The first is ordered for April the ninth, and that is going to be a Republican primary, which of course means that only the Republican candidates will be on the ballot, and only the voters registered Republican will be eligible to vote in that election. Now, the winner of that April ninth primary will go on to the general special election to face the Democratic candidate on June the eighteenth. And again, if y'all have any questions, I'm going to just jump right in. Now, before I get into the cost of this election, let me give you the bad news, good news, bad news on actually paying for this thing. The bad news is, the county is going to have to pay for these elections upfront, out of pocket. The good news is, since it is a state-ordered special election, the state will reimburse us for this. But the bad news is, there's a backlog, and we really shouldn't expect to get reimbursed for two, maybe three years. So whatever we spend on this election, we will be out of pocket for that length of time. Now, if these elections, for want of a better term, is a normal election that absentees, the ten-day early voting period, all ten polling locations open on election day, the cost per election will be thirty-eight thousand dollars. So to conduct both of the elections will cost seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, that being said, there is a possibility, and there's every indication, that the executive order that we had issued for the November general due to Hurricane Michael is going to be reissued for the hurricane-impacted counties for these special elections. It has not happened yet, but every indication is it is coming. Now, if that executive order is issued, you know, if we chose to do it, we would still have the absentees, just like always, the ten-day early voting period, but that would give us the authority to consolidate polling locations and to the two voting supercenters like we did on the November general. If we get the executive order and we decide to go that route, I can do both of the elections for a combined cost of forty-five thousand dollars, which will be a thirty-one thousand dollar savings. But of course, you know, if we do not get the executive order, that takes that out of our hands, and we're looking at the seventy-six thousand dollar price tag on it. I will say this, though, if we don't get the executive order, and we do have to do the polling locations, I'm going to need the county cell, I'm going to need a full court press because we are, although the polling locations are physically there, they're still, most all of them are stacked around with supplies, release supplies. Precinct four, for example, is still being used by FEMA right now. So I will need county crews in coordination with the fire teams to get the polling locations in working order to be able to conduct the election. That's, that's really it in a nutshell. Is any questions on?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The, first for me and Lot, but we had these two voting areas that had high turnout of vote.
Yes.
High turnout of vote.
Yes, and again, if we get that executive order, I'm willing to do the all polling locations open. If we do get the executive order and can't consolidate into the voting supercenters, I would recommend that we do that for two reasons.
And this is the only election on the ballot.
That's right. It's just the one race, the one race on the ballot. I would recommend we do it for two reasons. Number one, the cost, because although we're going to get this money back, you know, we're working now, and it's going to be two or three years before we get it. But the second reason, even with the cost savings, I would never recommend going to the voting supercenters if I thought it would have a negative impact on voter turnout. But from what I saw on the November general, twenty-six days after a hurricane, I mean, everything a mess, voters displaced everywhere, we actually had the highest voter turnout for a midterm general that we've had since two thousand and four. And I think it was primarily to getting the message out that how we were doing the election and having the voting supercenters. So if we get the executive order and we decide to go that route, I actually think we will have a higher voter turnout using the supercenter model. But again, like I said, there's every indication we're getting it, but I do not have it yet.
Okay. Any more questions? Just notify us when you get it.
Okay, one final thing, what I would like to do, so we're going to have to proceed forward as if we don't have the executive order. So ideally, what I would like to do is to go ahead and get a draft for the seventy-six thousand dollars going on the old model. And then if we do get the executive order, and I can come in at forty-five thousand, I would just write a check back to the counties for the remaining amount. Because, you know, we, I mean, this thing's right around the corner, we've got to get moving on it. So ideally, if it's, we all would like to go ahead and request the seventy-six thousand dollar draft to get rolling on this.
That, good.
If we can, and John and I have talked extensively the last couple of months, we're not the only ones that's going to be going to buy, and this is an unfunded mandate by the state. The state needs to step up the plate. We need to send the governor a resolution requesting the super precincts, and we need to send him a resolution for him to pay for it. County County does not have seventy-six thousand dollars to pee away on a race today. Liberty County does not have the money to do it, and at the end of the day, it's a state's responsibility. It is the party's responsibility, it's not the taxpayer's responsibility to pay for these. So I think we need to ask for two things. One, you know, just like he said, and he said it nicely, we don't have doors on several of these voting precincts. I mean, no doors on the fire departments at all. I mean, so the FEMA's going to have to be displaced if they use the fire station in St. Joe, which is probably the biggest precinct in the county. So at the end of the day, we need two things from the governor. We need him to pay for it, and we need him to allow the supervisor elections to do these super precincts. Now, some of the counties have taken extreme steps that we don't necessarily think is within the realm of the law. Mason County eliminated all their precincts, and by, I guess by resolution, which may or may not be legal, but to save money on this, because again, it's a pretty good chunk of money. We're talking about eighty grand to have these two elections for all the poll workers and whatnot. So we need to, we need to ask the state to pony up the money for this, not only for us, but for, I mean, how many counties in this district?
Ten, ten counties.
So we're talking.
You need a motion for us to send a letter?
That'd be my recommendation, that we send a resolution to the governor asking for what the supervisor elections asked for, which was the two super precincts, his office here and the Weewall Library, and that the state pick up the tab. Otherwise, you're going to have to dip into reserves, the money that you don't have to spend to pay for this. And again, we may get paid back in three years.
And I think a letter would carry a lot of weight, because the association of supervisor of elections, we have been lobbying about this for a long time, because every year, when the state budget comes out, the LBC allocates so much funds for the special elections reimbursement, and it's never enough. And so it's created a backlog, so in essence, what will happen is, once we submit everything, we're going to go on the bottom of a waiting list. And when the counters are full, then the state's going to say, we can pay off the next, you know, six, seven counties, and then the money's gone. Those counties have paid off, they drop off the list, everybody else moves up, and then they're waiting till the coffers are refilled. So, you know, any letters or, you know, any contacts that you have that you can talk to, it would certainly be helpful.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As was announced earlier, Senator Monford will be right here tomorrow at four thirty, is that correct? Four thirty, and all these counties are in his district too.
That's right.
So he will be brought aware.
And I will come to that meeting as well.
Please. In addition to that, look, and I did talk to John about this, if we could just give him the 45, authorize it today, and if it isn't, if it isn't approved, we'll give you the difference. I'll cover the first election.
That will work.
We've got 45.
So what I would suggest is, if you want to carry this motion, we'll get the sheriff to do a budget amendment, we'll bring it back at the next special meeting to reduce reserves by 45,000 and increase the supervisor of elections' election cost fund by 45, if that's agreeable.
Yes, that will get me going, and as Michael says, hopefully, best-case scenario, that will be it. But if we don't get the executive order, I will come back with an additional request.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion for the 45,000.
Sure.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Macron, that we move the 45,000 to Mr. Hammond's budget.
Right, so that includes a resolution?
So can we, all right, so we're going to put all that in. So we need a motion for the letters, and then the recommendation that the state pay it back also.
Correct.
Pick up the tab.
If we can do, I'm sorry, if we can do, instead of a letter, if we can do a resolution that you can sign and making that request, and I'll bring back the budget amendment at the next meeting.
All right, so I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on that? Any one in the public on this? No one in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. All right, moving on down to item number nine, Mr. John Forston. Of America's Mini Stories. I guess it's not here. All right. All right, moving on down to item number 11, First Public Hearing Propose Five-Year Capital Improvement Schedule Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, in front of each of you commissioners, I believe you have a packet of the capital improvement review. In addition to that, just for the public record, there was a public notice scheduled for today, First Public Hearing, February 26, 9:00 a.m. The second will be next month, March 26. It's been advertised in the News Herald pursuant to Florida Statute 125. It's also been posted on the county administration entrance, courthouse, and the county website, all consistent with our public advertising requirements. Unless there's any objection, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read the ordinance proposal by title, and then answer any questions, and then open up the public hearing.
Any objections to that? Go ahead, sir.
It's an ordinance per the requirements of Florida Statute 163-3177, subsection 3B, to yearly review and update the Gulf County five-year capital improvement schedule incorporating the Gulf County School District 2018-19 work plan, incorporating by reference the updated concurrency tracking data, and providing for appeal of ordinance and conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And again, it was been properly noticed for today's public hearing. If you would, Mr. Chairman, any questions to staff, and then after, if you would open up to public hearings.
All right, yes, sir. All right. Board members, you got any questions? If nothing, we'll open up to the public. Any one in the public, any questions, concerns with this five-year capital improvement? No one in the public? All right, Mr. North.
Mr. Collinsworth is going to give your report, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. In this capital improvement summary that you have before you, there's been a few items added back in Tab II. We added the Hurricane Michael damages that's going to be reimbursed through some DOT-funded projects, which was not in there in the previous report that was given last year. If any commissioners has anything that they need to add following, we can add it in as years come in, projects that have been fulfilled and taking off will take off. We don't know which ones have actually been paid out and closed out, but some of them projects that are in the 18, 19 year should be coming to a close, which will now come off. So if you have anything that you need to add or you need us to add on here, we can definitely do so. But the Hurricane Michael was the biggest one that we've actually added that was not in the previous, and it's listed out on those. It goes down, we had to update the school boards, they provided us with some information that we put in there. All the other projects were the same that you had in the past, that was not completed. Some got pushed a year, some got pushed two years down the road, we just put them in the right year and done some updating on there. Most of you are familiar with them, because some of these are the projects that you guys have actually come and requested. So if you have anything, please let us know, and we'll definitely try to get it updated. Some of these are grant projects that is coming down the pipe that we don't know about yet. As soon as we can find out that, we'll put them in as well. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Collinsworth, commissioners? All right.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if there's nothing from the public, this is the first public reading. The second, as I mentioned, will be on March 26. If there's nothing else, we'll reintroduce it at next month's meeting and introduce it for your consideration and adoption at that time.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving on down to item number 12, Davis Want My Home Permit?
I'll tell you that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you got it, yes, sir.
Yeah. Lee, I think we've worked out a resolution on this situation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Commissioners. There was an issue not of Mr. Davis's making. We've worked with the owners and the attorneys, and it seems to be as of now, we have the resolution. Hopefully, they've agreed to the terms that we set forth, and as of yesterday, those were stayed in motion, so this should be all cleared up.
We can go ahead and issue Mr. Davis a permit pretty quick.
Well, as soon as he turned, we've not had any application whatsoever.
Okay, as soon as he gets all this paperwork in?
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right, okay. All right. Am I missing anything? Ms. Lanier, you got any public comment?
No, sir.
All right, anyone in the audience need to come before the board before we dismiss? Oh, yeah, yes, sir. Mr. Brad, come on up, let's go ahead and take this in.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just got through running off numbers on both applicants on the bid, and building department suggests going with Fisher Construction for a total bid of $27745.
All right.
He wasn't up here.
All right, thank you, sir. I entertain a motion.
Also, Chairman, there'll be some direct purchase items off of this contract.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel, that we move ahead with Fisher Construction.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Any one in the public on this? Come on up to the podium, so state your name, address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner Brown and Kathy, President Kathy Construction Building. I'd like to clear up some factual misstatements that were presented at the last meeting in January. It was stated by Commissioner McDaniel that the contractor, which was my firm, Kathy Construction, had done absolutely nothing on Stormy Creek Fire Department. That's not true. The project was bid in June of last year. We were the only bidder. The project came in, I want to say somewhere around $750,000, close to $800,000. It was nowhere near what you were needing as far as the design. We had been working for months with the building department to redesign the building. We changed the building's size, we value engineered the electrical package from well over $100,000 electrical package to a $20,000 electrical package. We redesigned the building, we went so far as to even redesign the foundation to mitigate the quantity of concrete involved. The site work was taken out of our scope of work and was being done by public works. We couldn't do any physical work on the site until we had a building pad. The building pad was ready in September of 2018, and the formwork material was scheduled for delivery on October the 8th. We postponed the formwork delivery due to the storm bearing down on us, and we didn't know what that impact was going to be, but it didn't look good on Monday, so we postponed it. Obviously, we got a lot stronger impact than we thought. We lost everything. We lost our office, we lost our tools, trucks, trailers, equipment. I can't even move my forklift to the site because the truck I had pulling with was totaled in the storm. So not only did I lose at home, and so did several of our employees, we also lost half of our staff that did not come back to work after the storm. So I sent a letter to Commissioner McDaniel. Have you seen my letter dated February 14th?
To my knowledge.
Okay. I didn't come here today to spar with the county commissioner or to be confrontational at all. Every one of you has known me for years. I've built every fire station built in this county for the last 15 years. I'm not here to ask you to undo the decision that you made, but there were comments made publicly in this meeting that were ultimately put in the newspaper, that did not make our company look very good, and they were factually mistaken. And I think it needs to be addressed. If I had an issue with Commissioner McDaniel, I would address Commissioner McDaniel. I will tell you, my marching orders were prior to the storm, Minister Hammond can verify this, was to get this fire station built. I executed a contract in December of 2018 and signed it twice. Even though we had work ready to go in October, we had already ordered the building, the building had been ordered, we immediately ordered the building once we changed the size, because we knew the big time on the building was going to be six-plus months. So we immediately went to work trying to do what was in the best interest of this county. I also identified a number of things in that project in the original design that was money that was not the best bang for this county's buck, and we tried to cut all those items It just really, when I saw the video from the January meeting, I was shocked, because no one in this room that knew those facts stated them, and I didn't know to be here to clarify them, or I think the outcome of the January meeting would have been a totally different outcome. And one of the things that really, really concerns me is that was a comment made by, directed by a county employee to a member of my staff several weeks prior to that January meeting, that he was going to ensure that Stormy Creek Fire Department broke Kathy Destruction, something to that effect. So that was an expressed intent on part of a county staff member to ensure that we didn't build that building, or we were somewhat slandered in the process of that. And the train ran off the tracks last month. I didn't know to be here, I would have been here. I was displaced by the storm and trying to get moved back home. So I just wanted to clarify those facts. If you choose to move forward with the way, with the bids that you put today, feel free to do so. I stand ready, willing, and able to construct the building that I was hired to do back in June, that I have spent months of work redesigning. And one of the reasons why we couldn't reach a final contract amount back in December.
Hold on one second, Mr. Brown. I entertain a motion. We extend this time. Motion by Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner McDaniel in the opposition. Motion passes forward. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the contract I signed in December of 2018 did not include a price breakdown. One of the reasons it didn't include a price breakdown is the only set of drawings that I had for this building were our pre-engineered metal gun and shot drawings that we generated. I did not even have a copy of the original bid documents that showed the interior walls, that showed deployment layout, because they were in my office when it blew away. I've asked for that copy of the drawings several times, I didn't get them. If I'd had a copy of the drawings to have been able to verify the cost of the deployment and interior walls, that cost breakdown that Mr. Novak needed to finalize that contract and submit it for chairman's signature would have been done, and we would have already gone this way forward. Our concrete subcontractor is David Watson, and we won. David lost a lot of his employees during the storm. He and I had been working together to try to outsource employees and find some out-of-town crews. We've gone so far as to hire crew from Mississippi that we've had them stand by, ready to start the formwork and the concrete work, because David was shorthanded, and we're shorthanded. So I just want you to know, we're a local Gulf County company, our employees live here, pay taxes here, and vote here, as do the companies that bid today. We were the only one that bid it in June, when it wasn't on, when it wasn't a priority for Fisher, and it wasn't a priority for Mr. Potten, it was a priority for us. And we're the only ones that did it, and we cut the cost, I'd say, final numbers, we cut the cost by more than half. And I think that needs to be addressed. Do you have any questions for me? Any other questions?
Any question for Mr. Kathy?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Brian, for coming. Did you ever sign an official contract with Gulf County?
Yes.
Can you remember when you signed that, or do you have a copy of it or anything?
It's on my email. I have it. I signed the contract, emailed it back to Jeremy. He had sent me two different versions. I had signed the long one. I then signed the correct one and sent it back to Mr. Novak. But the cost breakdown structure that was Amendment C, is that correct? Was left blank, because I could not quantify the interior work of that building. I didn't have the drawings. I'd asked for one, but had not gotten. All I had was a paper copy. If I'd had a copy of those drawings where I could have quantified that work, we would have filled in Amendment C, and we would have been rocking the road. But as of the January 2nd meeting, the contract only had my signature on it.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, quickly, because I had a good meeting in my office, and I won't say two weeks ago, maybe about two weeks ago, anyway, and we talked about that there's blame on all sides. I'll take the county's chair the blame. In hindsight, I wished that we had got the state to let us do a design build. That's what we had been doing, and it was worth well in the past. They wouldn't let us do a design build. Commissioner McDaniel got this grant, this grant had more strains attached, and we had a limited amount of money to do something that in White City cost about 160% of what we had the money to do at Stormy Creek. And we tried to make it work, and we went around now, again, both sides, it drug, and it drug longer, and I think Commissioner McDaniel was more patient than some past commissioners would have been, but at the end of the day, I hate that it did not work out. And just like you said, you've done pretty much all of the county construction for the last 15 years. I'm pleased to say that your White City Fire Department did stand, we had minimal damage when a lot of things around it were laying on the ground. So I hate that you got a black eye and felt bad about it. I hate that the county got a black eye and felt bad about it. I hope we've learned from this and moved forward. And I do appreciate you bidding when nobody else did. I do think that we could have both done better communicating, especially after the storm, but even prior to the storm. It was our goal to get it done beforehand. I know you did mobilize, I did see your trailer there right before the storm, so I mean, I understand that, but at the end of the day, had we worked harder in the summer to get that ready to go, the building would have been done before the hurricane, and we'd be talking about something else. So I...
Well, in the late summer and then the fall, we were facing weather conditions, and Mr. Coughlin had his hands full trying to get dirt up there without sinking the tractor up the cab, and he got it done. He got us a building pad, and once we had a building pad and knew we had something we could work with, we went to work. The only reason the building wasn't delivered in January, Commissioner McDaniel, one of the comments made, the building hadn't been delivered and it was scheduled to be, it was scheduled to be delivered. I've made the call to delay the delivery, because until we had a slab on the ground, I would rather that building sit inside a locked fence at the plant than that building to be sitting in the mud in Weewol Hitchcock, Florida, for it to go to missing, for parts to start rusting, and piece numbers to start disappearing on the steel. So it was much safer sitting at the plant than it was sitting in the mud, which is why I made the call to delay it. There was, as Minister Hammond said, what this boils down to really is a failure to communicate. And even though we do have cell phone service back, and we do have our means of communication back, we're all inundated and can talk to one person at one time. So trying to get communication amongst us all has been extremely difficult, because we're just so overwhelmed with everything that's been on there. But what was stated at the meeting January 22 was not 100% factual, and I wanted to make sure that's clarified for board's verification. I do stand ready, willing, and able to move forward immediately with our original contract if the board were to choose to go that direction. If you don't... If the board were to choose to go that direction, if you don't, that's up to you. That's fine. On October the 10th, I was in Overstreet to help take care of that community. I was there for several weeks afterwards, every single day. And will continue to do that job as Overstreet Fire Chief to the best of my ability. And I would appreciate your reconsidering, but if you don't, so be it. And I think that's really all I have to say, unless there's any other questions.
Any more questions for?
Brian, I appreciate you coming today and giving, you know, your side of the, anyway, but also appreciate what you did for, you know, I saw you out there at Overstreet during the, during the times when it was tough and I appreciate what you did for the county.
It's what we have to do. We all were in it. When you get deep in it, you just go, you just swim. So, and I will say this for the record, I had made the comment to several folks in aftermath of the storm, that if they wanted to see an example of how a county, community and a county commissioner should work, they should watch Gulf County because this board did as good a job as any county commissioner and its staff did as good a job of any county commissioner could have done in aftermath of a storm like this, I commend you for that. And I just want the misstatements of January 22nd to be corrected. I found out a week after the meeting from our metal building company that you had rescinded the award on Stormy Creek. That's how I found out. I didn't find, I didn't get a phone call and that, I found out a week later. And I just did play it up right because I wouldn't have done that, shoot her on the other foot, that wouldn't happen. I wouldn't have done that any ago. So with that being said, that's all I have to say. And Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes, sir.
Please read my letter from February 14th. It's addressed to Mr. Novak. And if you will give me your email address, I will send it to you directly. Or do you want me to send it to?
I agree.
You got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Brian, just on behalf of the board, if there was misstatements, we apologize for that. And we appreciate you coming and addressing your concerns. Like I say, you've been a vital part of this community and we really appreciate all you have done. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right. All right, so we got a motion and we got a second and we opened up to the public. What's the, so what's the wishes of the board? We got, we got a motion to move forward with Fisher Construction, we got a second. A motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich. We going, I'm just asking, we going to continue to move forward with Fisher Construction?
Yes. Could I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's not a contract in place for Mr. Kathy?
No, there's no contract in place. There's no contract in place with Kathy Construction. There was a August of 2018 contract signed that was provided. That was the old contract, never been executed by the county. They redesigned the building. It was provided again in October after meetings in August and September were canceled. October 4th, the contract was sent again and December 20th, a signed contract came in on the old contract, when the contract had been revised following a meeting in December. We provided the new contract. At that time, we asked for the values and the dates of completion. We provided on Schedule C, as Brian indicated. That contract then was provided back to the county, signed without values or without the dates of completion, the two most essential parts of any contract, which is a material component of any contract. So as of this day, there's nothing signed by the county with regards to a contract with Kathy Construction. Brian represented correctly. He signed the old contract that was originally provided back in August and then he signed a new one without the dates of completion and without values in it. That is not a contract when you don't have a dollar amount and a date of completion in it. So essentially, Brian did represent, he signed it twice, he provided to the county. We had asked for that to be worked through Brad's office and to this day, we still have nothing signed from the county with Kathy Construction. But Brian did sign the old one, then he signed the new one without those values in there. And that is from August until the end of January. That's where we stand.
Okay. May I add one thing to what Mr. Novak's saying? Everything he's saying is correct. I could not sign a contract with values for work that could not be quantified because I did not have the drawings. I did not have a copy of the drawings. All I had was the drawings we produced for the exterior of the metal building and the slab. It did not show the bathrooms. It did not show the interior walls. So I cannot possibly have signed a contract with a value and a time of completion for a scope of work that I couldn't quantify. I'd asked for those drawings and didn't get them. I'd have had those drawings, Schedule C would have been completed with values and with times for completion. But without the drawings, I was stuck on a handstand on the back. I couldn't, I couldn't do that.
Okay.
I would ask if the commission would entertain table in it for 30 days and let, let me work with Administrator Hammond and see if we could come up with a resolution. Might be an option. I don't know, it's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the vote.
Okay. All right, appreciate it. All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich. My only question is, what Mr. Kathy just said about the drawings? Did we not get the drawings to him? That's, that's just my only question. He said he couldn't put a dollar figure to it until he got the drawings. So my question is, did we not get the drawings to him?
Could I say something, Mr. Chairman? It just seems like, you know, a lot of missteps in this whole process and I'm not blaming who's right and who's wrong, but this whole process was messed up from the beginning, it seemed like to me. And I know the train's already left the station, but something, something's just wrong in the whole process, so.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
If I may ask, who had the drawings and could he physically come to the, well, first of all, who has the drawings? Where's, where's the drawings of the materials that he can't quantify? Asking for the facts here.
I'd let Brad or Lee come up and address that issue if that's the board's discussion. I mean, I don't, I don't know where you are.
He asked a question?
Yeah. I can answer the question, if so, right.
I have a set of drawings in my office. I've had them since the day one of, since Mr. McDaniel has asked me to be over the project. I have a set of electronic drawings via file via, which is smaller. I think he's originally done the drawings, so he sent them to me. Personally, I've never been asked to provide anybody an extra set of drawings. Mr. Kathy, I think he's still here, Mr. Brown, we've met right back here in this room, I don't know, two or three times, trying to value the engineer, like he said. But since the day of the storm, Mr. Kathy's never asked me for any drawings. But I do have, I have a heart set in my office. I actually did ask for the drawings in our meeting right after the storm with County Attorney Novak was in the meeting. I asked for a copy of the drawings. I asked for an electronic copy of the drawings if at all possible. I went so far as to call the architect. I called Doug Schuler that produced the original set of drawings and asked him, could he send me an electronic copy of drawings? I requested Southeastern Consulting Engineers, see if they had an electronic copy of the drawings. At no time could anybody provide me a copy, an electronic copy of the drawings. But I did request it in our very first meeting post-storm. I said, I don't have the drawings. They were in my office when it blew away. I need a copy of the drawings. I did ask for them. And I asked for them specifically electronically if possible. So, and it never happened. And at the time, the first few months after the storm, I was displaced. I was traveling back and forth, staying two and a half hours away, trying to find a place to live here. I just recently got back home about a month ago. So I did ask for the drawings. Any other questions?
Brian, let me say this, I mean, you've talked a lot and there were some missteps in this whole process and I encourage you to sit down with Michael and I think the train has left the station.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying? I, many you've talked a lot, you know where I'm at on it and I defend you to the end, but the fire station's got to get built.
Oh, I agree too.
There's some more work coming down the pipe. I encourage you to bid and, you know.
That's why I say, I mean, if you want to reconsider, I stand ready, willing, and able, but I'm not standing here pounding my fist saying to do that. I respect that.
And if I can, just to wait in to try to make this go, I had a good blunt discussion with Brian. He and I have been, we share the same birthday, so. He's a little younger than him, but at the end of the day, we do need to move forward and I've told him we've got other things to bid on. This, again, I will take the blame for the county side because if the buck stops for me, there was a lot of communication problems, but it was more than just shop drawings at the end of the day. So if my recommendation would be move forward, that you have made your case.
Yeah.
County's taking blame, I'm taking some blame for it.
And I'm taking blame for us.
And we'll move forward, but let's move forward to low bid would be my suggestion and then we'll go forward and learn from the missteps that we had on this. But then again, there were some missteps and I wished, had we done nothing else, had we done nothing else, I wished we had done the design bill. Design bill keeps you from having to value engineer something that's twice as big as now. So that'd be my recommendation.
All right, thanks, sir.
Brian, I think at this point, just let's move forward.
That's fine with me.
And you've done a lot of work for the county and we should continue to do some work for the county and let's let this go, let's move on.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. And I take responsibility for the missteps and miscommunication on our part as well and we'll make sure that doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich. Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes forward. All right. Anyone else in the public? Come on up, man. State your name, address for the record, please.
Yes, Elizabeth Delaney, 245 Bay Hibiscus Drive. I'm actually here on behalf of the Coastal Community Association because Pat couldn't be here this morning and wanted to thank the four of you, Phil and Michael and Jeremy and Warren, for coming to our winter meeting about a week and a half ago Saturday. It was a very good meeting, as you could tell. Glad you got out early. We were there till almost 1:00. But, but thank you very much for coming and the folks really appreciated you being there. We ended up having five folks from DEP that extended the meeting a long time, but you could tell the energy was there in the room, so appreciate that.
That's a good meeting, best meeting I've been to down there.
It was pretty amazing, yeah. It was SRO, you got there late enough, you had to stand. But one question I did have about the Country Club Road, is Florida DOT going to pony up for that?
Well, they've done some patching.
I mean, the whole road's going to need to be redone.
So I suggest we're going to request they pave that road and some, just do a JPA and let us pay, then pay for it. They did a lot of damage. I will say this, we met with them on site and two days later, they had the fat truck out there and they actually cut out some areas. So it helps because it was getting very dangerous. The entire road was about to go in some sections, but we're going to request them to repave that road.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public before we dismiss? I'll take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming out to the board meeting. I entertain a motion that we adjourned. Motion by Commissioner McCrone.